Good evening, we're so glad all of you are here tonight. Before we get started with our meeting, would you join us in prayer?
Father, we welcome your presence, come and have your way. We want to see Nacogdoches be exactly what it is you have in mind. We want to see it thrive. We want to see the community members thrive. I love how patient you are, how kind you are, how gracious you are, that you have better things for us than we would ever ask for ourselves. And so we ask that you would give us understanding and favor as we make decisions. Would you give us wisdom and discernment? We trust you and we praise you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to now call our meeting of October 15th, 2019, to order. And first on our agenda is community recognition. Am I loud enough?
You should be fine.
I'm fine. Okay, good, 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 good. Okay, so tonight we are honoring one of Nacogdoches' favorite clubs, the Four Seasons Garden Club. And I would like to ask those members to come up here and join me. We are going to read a proclamation first. And then we'll take pictures afterwards. We'll be fine. Okay, well, the proclamation reads, "Whereas, Four Seasons Garden Club in Nacogdoches, Texas was organized on October 14th, 1969. The purpose of the club is to promote interest in and stimulate the love of gardening, beautify the community, and encourage education to continually increase appreciation of gardening development. And whereas, the club has donated $58,791 to the city and community since May of 1996, almost half of which was given in the last seven years, with the city of Nacogdoches receiving $22,070. And whereas, the club has supported Nacogdoches' historic sites, including Plaza Principale, historic Nacogdoches statues, Old University Building, Stern Hoya House, Durs Taylor House, Zion Hill Church, Old Stone Fort, Millard's Crossing, Oak Grove Cemetery, and Old North Church. And whereas, the club financially supports community beautification projects and programs, some of which include Nacogdoches Proud, Nacogdoches Downtown Business Association, Arbor Day Projects, Main Street Projects, Benita Creek Projects, Father Yale Park, Master Gardeners Demonstration Garden, Nacogdoches City Planter Boxes, Stephen F. Austin State University Gardens, Garden Capital of Texas, and Project Graduation. And whereas, the 26 members of the club have given many hours of donated time over the past 50 years and have been instrumental in the beautification of Nacogdoches. And whereas, the club holds an annual Christmas auction, which raises funds to support this community, which averaged almost $5,000 each year for the past two years. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Shelley Brophy, Mayor of the City of Nacogdoches, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of the Four Seasons Garden Club." That is wonderful, isn't it? It is, it is wonderful. Well, we're not finished yet, so hold on, hold on for just a moment. One of the things, first of all, where's our microphone? Oh, you got it, okay. So who's president this year?
Well, I don't know.
Okay. So is there anything you would like to add that maybe was a little stuffy here? But is there anything that you would like to add that maybe was left off?
Well, I would like to acknowledge our, and honor our, let me put this very correctly, our longest-standing member. Not necessarily saying that she's... Of the club, Diana Walker, who has been in it for 44, 45 years. Forty-five years.
Well, we'll let you hold the proclamation.
So, yes, she...
You hold that.
And we have a lot of longstanding members.
Well, that's wonderful. Well, on behalf of the city, we would like to give you this commemorative brick. So that every, hopefully it will go somewhere, so that when you all see it, I know it's a small token, but your city is very, very grateful for all you all have given and continue to give to our community. You have truly, truly made a difference in a lot of areas. So if you all would join me, we will take a photograph. And you can have that. And then we'll let them come down and we'll all scooch together. Oh, well.
I want Diana.
Yeah, get Diana up here. I might have to turn sideways.
Okay. We're fine, yeah.
One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, I appreciate it so much.
That's what makes our town so nice.
Or is everybody?
I come into the ass pharmacy every week. So much, Shelley. Are y'all gonna hand back a little session where you talk about things? Let the people in the audience say something? Okay, because I just want to say one thing about, I talked to Jeff about it, about our creek.
Okay. Let me sit down for a moment. How do you want to handle this, Mr. Day? She can do it at the opening of the Economic Development Agenda item. It has to do with the creek. Okay. Okay, so we will, we're gonna go through our consent agenda real quick, and then we will let you be the first person to speak on our regular agenda work session about economic development.
Okay.
And so you can talk about the creek.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's see. Moving on, two items to be removed from the consent agenda. If a council member would like to do that, if not, chair would entertain a motion for approval.
A motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, our regular agenda, City Council work session to discuss economic development. Mr. Jeffers, do you want to go ahead and present, or do we want comments first? Okay. Okay, so go right ahead.
Okay, I'm Diana Walker, and of course, I've been involved for many years with the city of Nacogdoches in many, many projects, the last being our trails. And our biggest concern that we have, and I know the city has had for years, is the erosion along the Lenana Creek. And my husband and I walk those trails across the street nearly every day. And the last flood we had, which was five inches of rain in an hour or two, it's unbelievable, the erosion that's taking place. And I'm sure many of you have probably never been over there to see it. But one of the biggest concerns is, you know, Encore came in and put in all those huge posts. Well, two of them are right next to the creek, and the water has already eroded around one of them. And it's just gonna be a matter of time before there's gonna be more serious erosion. Now, I know the pylons are deep, but here is a thought that I want y'all to think about. I've talked many times about Greenville, South Carolina, to my friends, and they're sick of it, I'm sure. But my son lives in Greenville, South Carolina, and they had the Reedy River that goes through their downtown. It's like our Lenana Creek. And they have the same problem that we have, that when it rains, it floods many of the downtown. And of course, years and years and years ago, they spent a ton of money building parks and trails, but they still continue to have problems. And we were there a couple of months ago, and we were, my son was showing me what they were doing. And it was so simple, they had a bend in the river, and when I say river, it's not a river. I mean, it's like a creek, like ours. And so they had dug it all out and made like a big pool. And then they built a waterfall that whenever it rains real hard, the water, when it goes over the waterfall, they call it an eddy, it digs out more and more of the creek to form a bigger and bigger pool. So there's less water going down the creek. And my thought was, Jeff and I were talking about it, and he said, you know, Representative Clardy is so interested in... And since Encore has built those things, and obviously their engineer didn't have a brain when he built them, because he wouldn't have put them that close to the creek, maybe some money can be, you know, we can get some money from Encore to help with some of these projects. Just a thought. But if you have a chance, y'all need to go over to the Native Plant Center. Of course, one of the trails has already, this much of it has dropped that much. And it's so dangerous, you know, we've got, they've got it closed off and they made a new trail. But anyway, I think the city should go look at that area where those Encore posts are, because it's gonna, and if we have another flood like we did, just, and they said that five-inch flood was the worst flood we've ever had in that area. And, but anyway, that's my two thoughts. Thank you, we're gonna miss you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Madam Mayor and City Council, not that anyone cares, but after today, there are only six council meetings left until January 31st. That's only a little bit of trivia for you. We're gonna talk about Farmer's Market and some options. I want to emphasize, none of these sites have been vetted. Say that again, none of these sites have been vetted. So when I get a phone call tomorrow to say, "How dare you," or "Gee, that's great," what will come after the council narrows potential sites? Then we will begin vetting those sites, including public comment. And it is imperative that the Farmer's Market group, they're going to have to endorse relocating, if that's what they choose to do. So one potential site for expansion is where the Farmer's Market is now on the map. Farmer's Market is to the south of that site. But there are, the acreage that is in yellow, it is outside of the floodway. Therefore, that is an area that additional improvements could support the hitchlot that is currently used. I want to emphasize that the hitchlot is in the floodway. Therefore, it cannot be improved, would be a violation of our floodplain ordinance. So we have to look for options to be outside of the floodway for improvement. Another potential site is utilizing Commerce Street in the downtown area. Amy highlighted Mast Hall as a potential property that could complement Commerce Street. But there are other vacant buildings which may be utilized for that support. It's just that Mast Hall happens to be the largest site. I know that the fire chief is shaking his head, no, you're not going to do that. But if we do do that, over the objections of the fire chief, who works for you, not for himself, that there has to be arrangements made so that fire trucks can get in and out of the area. You can't put up permanent structures that would heed fire trucks moving into that area if needed. And so this is just an idea of what that might look like. Blunt Park, which is adjacent to Memorial Hospital, just to the north. It is a city park, and there, this site has interesting possibilities with already paved surfaces. The hospital is aware of the discussions. They have said, well, it's something interesting to explore the possibilities. Once again, the site would have to be vetted with the neighborhood. But its proximity to SFA provides a new constituency for the Farmer's Market. And also, its proximity to a pharmacy that, full disclosure, is owned by M&amp;S. And so Garth Hens and his associates, so he may not be able to be involved in this discussions. If you become focused on it, I say it's all right right now. Don't ask the city attorney. There's an aerial of Blunt Park, once again, on the north side of the hospital. You can see that it's a pretty good space with interesting possibilities. We threw this one in, don't think that there would be much interest, but it's on North University, on some property that's already owned by the city. But it's probably a little bit too far away from population centers to where it might have serious considerations. I'm also going to mention why I'm up, and then I'll stand away from public comment, and then I will reappear. But this is on Old Tyler Road, the intersection of Old Tyler Road and West Austin. This is an area for potential economic development. We have not vetted the site, have not talked to property owners, we don't know about water and sewer. There's just the question as to whether or not you want us to spend some time exploring these possibilities. This site is not going to see significant economic development unless there is a developer. And developers are hard to come by. But if the council's interested, then we would vet the site, identify the appraised value, water, sewer, other public infrastructure needs. And then we would go work with our partners with Nedco to see if we could not find a developer that would be interested in opening up that site. Madam Mayor, I'll step away for public comment, and then I shall return.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to have a comment on this? Okay. Council. Now, this is a workshop session, we've had several now. So if you have questions or clarifications from Mr. Jeffers, or we can go, we can do that, or we can start talking and then ask him as we need to. So is there anything initially you have for him? Mr. Anderson?
Not initially. I'll come up with something, though.
Ms. Fisher?
No, not really.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Hans?
There are things I like and don't like about each of them. I'd be curious to see, I'm assuming we don't have any data, it'd be really hard to get it, it seems like. But on the expansion idea, slide nine, yeah, there we go. It seems, zero data, gut feeling, driving to antipastas, that that soccer field gets quite a bit of use. And so if we were to put a permanent structure there, or pavement there, or something along those lines, that might be, I don't wanna say disrupting, more disruptive than some of the other alternatives.
The park is popular...
It seems like it.
...with adults as well as kids.
Just a thought.
Madam Mayor, what our intent is this evening is to become focused on a site or two. And so if there are any of these sites that stand out, then we will begin the vetting process, and then we'll be able to come back to the council relatively quickly and say, here are the pros and cons of this site. This is what the Farmer's Market organization says about it, et cetera.
If it's okay, I'd love to just kind of walk through the list. I was kind of the thorn in everybody's side to promote this. I'd love to walk through the list and hear everybody's thoughts on what you see as a potential pro and con. Kind of walk through the list from the top to the bottom, and then maybe we narrow it down to a couple that seem like they make more sense.
In doing that, I may sort of place a fly in the ointment, so to speak, and at least ask about the potential of another location.
Sure.
If it is, if it's one that's stentable, I don't know. And that is the spot under the 59...
Okay.
...bridge that we've discussed for a potential food truck park, as a possible location for that as well, that the city already owns, that would provide some weather protection as it sits now, without having to build a lot. The city already has power there, which probably would have to be upgraded, I'm sure. But I had thought about that as a possible dual-purpose location for both of those uses, given that it is, again, already possessed by the city and has most of the things necessary to do it, and would not be a big leap from where the current one is as far as the central location.
Where exactly are you talking about?
On Cox Street. Do you know where the city maintenance facility is on Cox? Just down Cox from Festival Park.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's an unused lot that the city has, that already has power and is basically just there being mowed right now, and is unused other than that.
Is it near the basketball courts?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I think they use it for storage of field dirt and that sort of thing, but that's about all that I can see. It's used for under the bridge there.
Yeah, it's not critical to our operations.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's by Benita. It's pretty neat, and the park.
Yeah, yeah. Close proximity to downtown. It's still a pretty central location, as is the current location. So I just wanted to throw that idea out there as a possibility, anyway.
There's also enough space that you could have, it could be multipurpose.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got all the entertainment, you could put another little splash pad down there, you could have a pavilion.
Yeah, there's a lot of potential for that space, and it is otherwise unused.
And I really like the idea of, if we're talking about a place for food trucks joining the two, it just seems to make sense.
That was my thought, too, that it might be good that they can both kind of feed off of each other and benefit, one can benefit from the other pretty easily.
It is staff's intent that all the sites would have a food truck component.
Okay.
I am not in favor of taking away any park space that exists already.
I agree.
So there's two on the list, for sure, that I would not even consider. Maybe University or else, I don't know, Tyler Road. But I do like the idea about the area near Cox Street. That sounds more, as far as aesthetics, too, because Mask and Blunt Park definitely not would be on my list in any downtown venture, except for near Cox Street.
Which ones are you knocking out for you? The Blunt Park one? And which one's the other one?
Also, the, where the soccer field is.
Okay, 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 okay.
I mean, where the dog park is.
Doing the expansion, you're right.
Yeah, doing the expansion, yeah, that's...
I think I love the idea of finding something walkable. So I like Cox, that's probably my new favorite. I liked Blunt Park for that reason, just because it's right in between downtown and SFA. But I hear you on the parks issue. That was my hangup with expansion. If we go the entirely different route and go destination, the University Drive is interesting. That just takes a lot more creativity to dream up what that could be, and then it'd be pretty tricky to walk up and down University safely.
Well, it is part of the trail system.
That's a good point. On the Cox Street, something else that would be interesting, too, is there is a six-tenths or three-quarter of an acre over on Fredonia and Monk, just south of the Regions Bank. That's probably, it must have been FEMA'd or something, because it's not, you can't build on it, you can't do anything with it, per the listing, and it's been on the market forever for 20, 25,000 bucks. That would be an interesting possible site for park benches, like for picnic benches or food trucks, or something along those lines. Decent expansion opportunities down there.
Do we own both of those properties on the side of Cox Street where the maintenance facility is and the empty park?
I believe that we own both sides.
Yeah, both sides, across from the maintenance facility, both the one directly across the street and just beyond the railroad tracks, where there's a small soccer field there, are both owned by the city.
Oh, on the other side of the railroad track?
Yes, yes. As well as the one on the, I guess, technically the east, yeah, north side, east side, however you view it there.
What designation is most of that property flood-wise?
There is part of it that is in the floodplain, but that'd be part of the vetting. I don't think any of it is in the floodway.
Part of my thought with that is that it could be done with weather-protected area that would require relatively minimal construction investment on the city's part in doing that. Because you can just use the overpass as a fair portion of that and do some modification there.
You also want bathrooms and...
Yeah.
And that's one thing that we'd have to check on, as to whether or not TexDOT has any restrictions.
Yeah.
They don't in Austin.
As far as using, well...
No pun intended. But we would investigate that.
To me, that would be a good place to potentially build some restrooms. There are already some there across the street at the small pavilion there.
Then you have money...
It's just down the street here.
You have money in the budget for new restrooms in Festival Plaza. So, you know, we can toy with the location. Madam Mayor, I kind of hear a consensus that Cox Street is number one.
I like the fly in the ointment, that's great.
I do, too. I think it provides us with more versatility and broader area to do some, some things that would appeal to a lot more people.
It's kind of a blank palette, but it has enough there to work with, I think, that it could be at least a good possibility.
Do you know, I just pulled up the map with the Platts, trying to figure out what all the city owns versus what we don't own. Is there enough space for park, to create ample parking, you think, or...
I think so, yeah. There are already some parking areas there on either side of Cox Street, on the east side of the overpass, which, you know, what I would envision would be that it would be open on both east and west sides under the overpass there. And there is quite a bit of area, all, basically that whole side of that block between the overpass and the railroad tracks is all, has all been poured as approach. So there would be really no need to do much other than designate parking area there.
Is there room to build some sort of a permanent structure there, as far as a, having some sort of an anchor tenant, almost? Something along those lines, or...
If it's allowable, in that... If it's allowable in that area, there's certainly a space for it, yes.
Okay, so this, yeah, so we'll look at that area. And then is there a second choice that anyone would like to have staff vet?
I lean toward the Commerce Street one if we had to pick a second one, for the same reason that Councilmember Bolden stated about not taking away park space. And then I think that the North University one, although it does give us a blank slate, I do think that it's a little removed from the center of town. A little too removed, I guess.
Okay, any other thoughts about that? Commerce?
Mast Hall?
Well, Mast Hall, I mean, that's private property.
Yeah.
We're looking for a site to where, as Councilmember Hens had mentioned before, that a health food store or some type of activities inside, but there are other buildings on that block that could be used instead of mast. And of course, the private property owner gets to say, sure, I'll talk to you, or no, go away.
I mean, you have to look at parking, plus you got to look at traffic in and not go into that even for the vendors setup.
Right, and we, you know, there is parking on Commerce Street on the south side, so we'll count those spaces. And I would imagine that there will be some of the businesses that will be very concerned that they might be losing their parking space, but that's part of the vetting process.
A lot of the vendors have trailers, too. That was my only hesitation with downtown spaces. That would be seemingly tricky.
Yeah.
And it doesn't allow for any recreation for families or...
Right.
And staff, does staff have a recommendation at this point?
No, ma'am.
What might be, okay.
When I think of farmer's market, I think of open spaces, you know, trees, grassy areas where kids can come while their parents shop or whatever. I don't look at a brick and mortar downtown as a farmer's market, the aesthetics, vendors in and out with different type of vehicles. Just don't picture that.
You know, the downtown farmer's markets, you see them extensively in urban areas. And you're right, they don't have a lot of green space. They try to make it, and I don't, you're not going to have room to make green space on Commerce Street without Fire Chief having a coronary. So it's probably not going to, well, you're not going to see green on Commerce Street.
Most of the sort of central urban farmer's markets with which I'm familiar are in what have been large, generally warehouse-type buildings, so that they are large, open spaces, but covered, weather-protected.
Yeah, the ones that I've seen, San Diego, Santa Barbara, San Francisco.
Think about San Antonio as well.
Yeah, they're in the downtown areas and they put up tents. It literally pops up overnight and then it's gone the next day, all of it.
Yeah.
But they're very robust, but those are large urban centers.
I also like the idea of us, I mean, I know it's a bridge, bridging north and south, you know, having something that pulls people a little bit further.
I must admit that was part of my impetus.
Ah.
I think it'll be interesting. After some of our workshops, I've gotten a lot more feedback about these than I have anything else. So even if we just nominate that one as probably the most viable candidate, I'll be curious to see how many new ideas we get now that people are aware. I think this is something they'd get behind and be excited about. They have passions about a given spot in town. I'm sure we'll hear about it, which is really what we want.
I think you're right. Okay, so do we want to only look at that particular one at the present time? That's fine with me.
Yeah, and for whatever reason, if it blows up on us, then
We'll come back.
You get to take another stab at it. Or if you come up with a better idea, as was just mentioned, then we'll go look at it. Council makes the rules.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Just about the farmer's market.
Okay. What, do you have another comment about?
Not about the farmer's market.
Okay, no. What I think we need to do is see if there is anything else, because that was just only one portion of our original economic development workshop. And so we need to see what else there is that we would like to probably discuss that's under the economic development umbrella. Is that, or you would like to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna, the slide is up. And since Mr. Jeffers talked about it, I know you said that this has not been vetted yet. You've not talked to property owners. I just want to flag a concern. When developing Old Tyler Road came up at our last economic development work session, Councilmember Anderson said something along the lines of people own land there who don't even know that they own it. And it just, it made me think about the concept of family land and houses and property being passed down to a bunch of people across generations. And there might be a resident there who is like a one-hundredth part owner, right, but lives in that, I mean, that's their home. And my concern would be, and I know that there are safeguards for this, which is why I'm flagging it, my concern would be a developer coming in and kind of like buying off the other owners who live elsewhere and don't even know that they own it and kind of pushing out residents who call those places homes. And so that's just something that if we do decide to vet and look into, that I would like to be kept in mind.
And that's an excellent point, and that's one of the reasons why we were curious about this intersection. There are few, if any, residents.
Okay.
So it gives us the possibility of maybe pushing for development without impacting any residents. But there may be, same would still apply with vacant property, where you have the absentee landowners and there's somebody in the area that are aware that is the family land. But those are things that we can fully vet as we consider the possibilities.
But we're not talking about the property along what we call Mill Pond, right?
No.
Speaking of Old Tyler Road, near the intersection of West Austin.
Correct.
Right. I'm sure Mr. Anderson can speak to this, but that becomes a zoo on title issues. And so there's not people that are booted from their property in practice. It'd be pretty nightmarish.
Yeah, there will be some intensive research on who actually holds deeds and so forth, and it can be lengthy, as I have found out from personal experience. It can be challenging to trace all of that back.
And a reminder that City Council does not have condemnation authority when it comes to economic development. You used to, but that is a power that has been stripped from municipalities by the legislature a few sessions ago. Now, that still doesn't do what we just described about a potential buyer going and contacting absentee landowners and not involving the person that resides there. That could still happen, and that's something that we should safeguard against as a city.
I'm certain, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I am certainly not a real estate expert, but I have read about that happening elsewhere, and I just want to make sure that the negotiating power and interests of any residents, if there are any, is maintained and protected.
The records at appraisal district is horrendous. I mean, we were trying to obtain property for the church, and they had been building for twelve years. Person didn't even own the property. They hadn't never been to Nacogdoches. And there was no taxes paid on several of the lots that we were trying to obtain, ten, twelve, fourteen years, just sitting there. Now, once the families found out that we was looking to purchase the property, there was several of them that thought they wanted their share of the money. Of course, when once they were told that they had to update their taxes, they went away. The records are down at the appraisal office.
But I would tend to agree that from that intersection of Old Tyler Road and Austin, toward the loop in both directions, West Austin, honestly, between the loop and Old Tyler Road being, to me, an even more attractive option there because there's almost nothing in that stretch. Not really nothing commercial or residential in there. And there are, you know, obviously, other options, and I could go on trying to sell things in my words that I think are good options that will be ultimately, as I sixty-nine becomes a reality, will become even more attractive down the road. But the area around that intersection, I think, is very workable, as long as it does not push, in my opinion, too close to the older residential area. As, you know, as Roy mentioned, Old Mill Pond, that area where there are some families who have had homes there for generations.
Okay. What else about economic, under economic development?
If I could, Madam Mayor, is it okay to vet this site?
Please.
Do you want more information for development?
Which one? This one here or the?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was pointing at the West Austin and Old Tyler Road.
So with the intent of vetting it, with the intent of?
Seeking a developer to actually develop it for retail, which is what the discussion was about Old Tyler to begin with. But as we've learned, a lot of Old Tyler has residents that have been there for generations, and it never was the intent to disrupt those neighborhoods.
So, well, you don't have, so the Economic Development Office, I mean, I guess they would be involved?
Eventually, we got to look at water, sewer, the other public utilities, ownership, see whether or not there's any issues that blows up the site. And then if there's not, at some point, we knock on doors of property owners to ask if they're interested, because we certainly don't want to encourage the sale of someone's property without their permission. And then if they are, then if you don't find a developer, nothing's going to happen.
Yeah, usually areas of its nature are owned by one family.
Could be.
Yeah.
Like I said, we've done no vetting, other than looking at Google Earth.
Okay. Well, I think it's a good idea to start that process because we're running out of places. And so, and we know how long it can take, so that seems like a...
May I suggest a second area close to that and to include possibly in the vetting, and that being on Stallings Drive between Douglas Road and Durst?
Okay.
That's another area that is pretty lightly used and has fairly good access, or no worse access probably than the Austin and Old Tyler Road area.
And you brought up a great point there, Councilmember, and that is the planning of the sixty-nine corridor. And the more I think about it, we don't have the bandwidth to develop a meaningful plan for that area. So administratively, we're going to do an RFQ to identify some companies that are qualified to do that. And then we will sit down with our number-one pick, negotiate a price, and then we bring a package to the City Council to where at that point you can say thumbs up or thumbs down as to whether or not you want to do it. I have no idea as to expense, but I'll remind you of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've set aside for an extraordinary economic development project. And I said, I don't know what that is, but you'll know what it is when you see it. This may be one of those projects. And there's some other possibilities for securing funds, depending upon the price tag. But we're moving ahead administratively with getting prepared to solicit the RFQ.
Good. I think that is the right way to go, because that is crucial, and it will be here before we know it. So, okay. What else under economic development? Is there any other part of, you know, I'm just trying to think, you?
We had kicked around housing and affordable housing. I suppose there's, we could weave in anything and justify it as economic development, but that was something that I think a few of us had keyed in on as an issue that we have, is not a whole lot of, I don't mean affordable housing as in extraordinarily cheap, just something that a single earner, teacher salary, or something along those lines, something they could afford. There's just not a whole lot of that available right now, which is challenging.
So how would that fit in with a discussion on, like revitalization of neighborhoods, older neighborhoods?
I suppose similar to what Mr. Jeffers was talking about, perhaps we pick an area that's an acre, two acres, three acres, four acres, somewhere in there, whether it's between neighborhoods or something along those lines, and try to find some way to prime that as a developable area within the city already. Certainly bringing in engineering to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot. That way we can service it with water, sewer, and it's not already on an overtaxed part of the grid.
Because I think that'd be a really, like, almost like a pilot-type project. We could do a neighborhood and see.
If I may interject?
Please.
On those lines.
I was hoping you would.
And stop me if I'm overstepping my bounds, Mr. Jeffers, but I happen to know someone who has more or less lined up architecture schools at A&amp;M and UT to have basically a design competition for affordable housing that is affordable by design, not by inexpensive construction. Something that could be sort of a marquee item for the city. And this person has had trouble getting, in both Lufkin and Nacogdoches, getting the entities, the nonprofit entities that are funded and charged with doing that sort of thing, interested in funding the competition, which would be relatively minimal. And with the conclusion of a competition and a design, I think finding a developer to run with that would not be difficult.
Do we have an estimate as to how much said competition?
Has that number been presented to you?
I've heard it, but I don't remember.
My guess is, if I, this is an extremely rough My guess is, if I, this is an extremely rough estimate, but in the two to three hundred thousand dollar range to do a full-blown competition. And this would be pitting two of, two of the top architecture, um, schools in, in this part of the country, um, against each other in, in an effort to, in a good-hearted way, um, find, find it a, a better solution than, than the standard, um, approach to, to affordable housing.
Is that something that we could vet by asking staff to vet that? Like, uh, with the expenditure of two or three hundred thousand dollars, they do indeed or don't think that realistically it's something that a developer would bite off and choose? Doesn't that we could have them vet and then reach out potentially to proactively get the interest of developers?
Sure, but, but also, and by the way, I don't know how the Addys could compete in that area, but whatever you think.
Concrete buildings.
Also have a proposal that you want, which I think.
Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah.
And so why don't you go ahead and ask that that be on the next work session?
Yeah, that is, I guess, sort of, uh, along the same lines. I, uh, I have been working with, um, some, some property owners and some other interested parties in an area in my ward that is, um, historically known as Irian Hill, I R I O N, to do, to put together kind of a model neighborhood redevelopment project. Partially because some of it's already been done. And there's a lot of potential in the area to continue that. And my hope is that in, uh, in doing that, and I will have, when we get to this point and as a work session topic, I will have the, the, uh, woman who is going to be chairing that sort of an advisory committee, um, as a liaison with the city, come and, and give a little bit more specific presentation. But my hope is that if we can create a model for doing that, that it can be used in other areas of the city that, uh, that are both a need and are, are very good possibilities for doing the same sort of thing. And I have, um, sort of following my dad's lead. I've, I've made, uh, sort of my life out of repurposing as much as can be repurposed. And, uh, I, I like the idea of continuing that and creating a model that will make it a less daunting task for others to do more of the same.
When would, um, when would you be ready for that?
Um, I, I think at least an initial presentation could be ready at next month's work session.
Okay, okay. Uh, anything else you want to add to that?
No, I, I, you know, I, I didn't mean to jump off on that, that topic. But as, you know, when I was thinking about the idea of, of, uh, of developing an existing area, Mr. Jeffers rightfully steered me in that direction as well. But there are a lot of possibilities for using areas inside the city that are either, um, somewhat neglected or completely undeveloped for all manner of housing and, and a big part of that needs to be, um, affordable housing. And I think that I, I'm not a big fan of affordable housing by materials. I'm a fan of affordable housing by design. And, uh, I, I think it, for a lot of reasons. But a big part of it is that it creates something in which people, the people who live there have pride. And that, that makes them better neighbors, it makes them better citizens. It, um, it makes them happier to be where they are. And, uh, I, I think that's, in my opinion, a better approach to affordable housing.
I love that. My wife gets on it whenever I even use the words affordable housing. I just don't have the vocabulary to go around that. But certainly what we need is not, uh, human warehouses. That, that's, that doesn't accomplish the goal.
And that, that tends to be the approach. It just, just get it done as, as quickly. And in general, the, the standard approach is the cheaper approach, but it doesn't have to be. You can, you can use better materials, you can use better design, and you can come up with something that is, is more of an asset to both the community and the people who live there. And we've got a lot of possible areas inside the community that, that, uh, in which I think that could work and that, that could use something like that as a, as kind of a, a marquee project.
That sounds.
That sounds great.
Very good to me. Do you all have any problems with that, us looking at that?
I mean, I'm, uh, off our affordable housing. There's a lot of vendors that's doing on an individual basis, but it doesn't encompass the whole neighborhood. And, and you have spot, we have, et cetera. But you still have the next door neighbor that he's not in line with what's, the progress that's being made. So if you could just get an area. And the affordable housing in Nacogdoches is, to me is, that's what we already have, is good. I mean, it doesn't look like, well, it's basically cookie cutter's structure, but they're well-built and they've been well-maintained by the housing authorities. So I, I agree with affordable housing, uh, you know, for, to be looked at, vetted.
I think the neat difference there is that they, you'd have homeowners, which is a huge issue that we're having. Because when you don't, when you're not establishing homeownership, you're missing out on opportunity to create wealth in a very significant way. So I think that's, that scratches that itch too.
Yeah, one of the problems you have, like, in certain neighborhoods, there's, has been said before that don't know who owns the property, you know, so.
Um, let's see, how can I want to ask this? Are we ready with any, uh, reports on previous workshop topics we've had? Say, if we begin, if we have your presentation, is there, uh, and we try to do two things. Is there, uh, a staff report on anything we previously discussed? Because we did decide we didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, and yes, we can report on whatever it's a matter of picking past topics. And right now, my, my mind is blank about what else you spoke about. Help me out.
Well, we, um, we did talk about, uh, the infrastructure and transportation because we were talking about the comprehensive plan.
And I think the transportation's gonna be tied in with.
Correct.
Planning of I sixty-nine. Infrastructure, we can give, uh, a report on that. We probably won't be through because we're working on identifying financing options for some of these water and sewer projects.
Okay, um, what other, is there something else someone wants to bring? Uh, I did have a question about, you want us to, to have a work session on health insurance? Was that, is that from you?
Not anymore. No, that list that we gave council, some of it came from staff. And I think at the time that the list was, uh, developed, that we were working on health insurance.
Okay, okay, I was wondering about where that came from. And the, okay, so landscaping ordinance. I'm still, I'm concerned about comprehensive plan. I'm concerned about our infrastructure and looking at zoning again. So that's kind of where my head is at. But I'm, I don't know what everybody else is thinking. That's what we need to, if there's something else we want to visit, uh, we just need one other thing we can talk about.
I'm trying to recall, we picked like three areas that we were hoping to advance the ball, either internally or outsourced in, in a consulting format.
For I sixty-nine?
That was one. On the comprehensive plan, there's.
On the comprehensive plan.
Five or six areas we wanted to target.
Yeah, infrastructure was a big part of it, yes.
Infrastructure were the two.
Just the two, okay, got it.
But you can add whatever you want to add.
I think those were the two that we had chosen as the, the most crucial immediately.
So we're gonna talk about, we're gonna do for the next work session for sure, affordable housing, right?
Well, that was part of redevelopment of neighborhoods, yes.
And we're putting them both together, okay, that was my question.
Well, that may be enough then, if it's.
Mr. Anderson's gonna fix all the neighborhoods next time.
I can worry you out all night on that subject, so.
And then perhaps thereafter, the, the month after, we pick up on.
We do the.
The infrastructure, get a, a rough idea. I don't know how much time is necessary for, for that to be. A first run-through to give us some sort of an idea, at least to start the ball rolling on whether or not we need to bring, start the financing discussion sooner than later or later than sooner.
Yeah, you, you, when you look at, uh, Bonita and, uh, Banana Sewer Trunk Mine, you're talking about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. I would argue that those need to be done sooner rather than later. We can't coddle together twenty-five or thirty million dollars from, um, reserves. And so that's number, probably number one on the list. And then there'll be some other water and sewer projects to throw into the mix. And you have begun talking about a bond issue for other purposes. You want to build a new library? You want to build some fire stations? Now the fire chief is playing attention. Nope.
Nope, he's delaying his phone.
What do you visualize for the future if you're talking about having to finance those improvements, additional improvements to the parks? It's kind of a wish list. And then on the wish list, you will have more than you can ever afford. And then you begin whittling it down.
So on the ones that we've selected, the infrastructure as an example, how much time would be needed to be, to get some sort of prioritization from engineering to get an idea? Just to start floating out?
It already, it already exists for the most part. We chip away at it every year.
But as far as initiating the conversation of financing and how?
Yeah, we're, we're preparing that now.
Oh, got it, okay.
And I could have something ready at the next work session. It just probably wouldn't be the final snapshot.
So perhaps the one thereafter or?
Okay, December or January, okay. Okay, anything else?
Uh, I'm going way back, but we, we went off on our tangent. Just on the, the, um, talking about, one more thing about economic development. When we've been discussing it, um, we've been talking about it in terms of what areas we're gonna develop. Um, and then when we've heard from Larissa and from Nedco, there's been a focus on trying to bring businesses in, trying to bring businesses from outside here. And I would just be, um, curious to see if there are plausible opportunities for expanding or creating new local businesses. I've been reading a little bit on local economies, um, and the benefits and, um, wondering what we do already in that department and what things we're not doing that, that, that maybe we could do.
Sure, and, and I will say that's the number one priority of Nedco, is to grow from within. Typically, the problem that you encounter that stops it is that they're under-capitalized. City doesn't have the financial resources to, uh, do that in many instances. But we sent them to, uh, get an SBA business plan. And like I said, they kind of come to a screeching halt. There's a program that Nedco has where projects that have merit, they try to match it up with, uh, a financial angel here in town. None of that has worked. The individuals that with money, they look at it and said, no, too much risk, I'm, I'm not interested. But we'll keep looking.
But we also have had successes with the entrepreneurship classes and the accelerator programs. And that, so the entrepreneurship classes are for people who want to open a business, and start a business that are local. And then the accelerator program is people that want to expand their business. So both of those programs, um, have done.
And that might be interesting to get a, to get a review of that.
Yes.
They're doing it literally right now for the accelerator program.
But expansions and even open new businesses is based on customers. I mean, you open a new business and you take away customers from another person. So, uh, your customer base is very important as far as expansions and opening up new business.
My thought, I think, is, um, not, not anything against, you know, the Walmarts of the world, but, um, when we were talking about the farmer's market and, and, and maybe, maybe opening up a new health food store or expanding Granary Street, that kind of, um, stuff. And that, and that kind of, of quality and focus on local food, I don't know that I would be in the corner crying if we took some customers from Walmart. That was more where my brain was.
But the, the amount of people that goes to Walmart is based on a economics, home economics. They're not going to venture out to a high-priced product when they can bring basically the same product, maybe a lower-scale product home.
Right, and so then.
They, they not getting pay raises on the job. There is the unemployment part of it, so you're gonna have to be innovative to get those.
Right, and I mean, the question becomes different then. How can you provide for local needs at a competitive, in a competitive way?
It's, it's been my impression so far that Scott Gordon, the, the new president of SFA, is, is very intent on, um, SFA's being more of a resource for local and regional existing businesses, employers, as well as, as a resource for potential outside businesses moving in. I mean, that, you may have talked to him more than I have, but that certainly from what I have, that, that seems to be a, a big goal of his.
I was perfectly comfortable in my chair until Mayor Pro Tim Bovin spoke. And then I said, okay, gotta get back up.
You didn't have to.
To, on economic development, and everyone knows this, um, two types of development, retail and industrial. And industrial doesn't always translate into smokestacks. And what you were talking about is true. When another retailer opens up, especially a restaurant, all it does is divide the pie a little bit smaller. And that's not good for the economy, certainly not good for our sales tax production. Our contract with Nedco specifically calls for them to do industrial development, specifically. And Larissa, your, uh, department head for Nedco, uh, president, CEO, when she's talking, uh, with the Nedconians, or are, uh, living with the Nedconians, that didn't come out right. She is advancing a proposal to where they would hire a consultant to develop a game plan for industrial development. And we hope to have that. She's in Spain, so, uh, I'm not gonna get in trouble until she gets back. But I would say that we'll have that by the end of the year, to where Nedco can lay out, okay, this is what we're gonna do to go out and create jobs, preferably higher-paying jobs. Now, what you hear as an excuse, and I consider it an excuse, it's not a reason not to do it. I'm not talking about Nedco. I'm not talking about Nedco's current leadership as well, we can't create jobs because we don't have a trained workforce. Well, which comes first, chicken or the egg? And we've been working on a vocational school for more years than I care to remember and I think that we're getting close to having something done in conjunction with the high school or NISD and, and also with SFA. But the vocational school's not going to solve the lack of a trained workforce overnight, it's going to take years. We gotta create jobs now. And so that's gonna be the focal point of this study to address what you're talking about, is that we gotta put more money in the economy, we gotta grow the population, we have to, um, take care of the underemployed and give them opportunities to, uh, advance. And so that's a chapter that will be coming and it'll be a good workshop topic.
Don't make him get up again.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't make him get up again. Okay, so we've got the redevelopment of the neighborhoods we're gonna talk about and then the second thing is?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any, are we having executive session?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay.
Ms. Jan would be so mad if we were. She needs to see the Astros.
Anything anybody else has? Okay, if not, uh, tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.